It's now six thirty. I'd like to call this city council meeting of Menneson to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Cosner.
Here.
Councilman Nestor.
Present.
Councilperson Thomas. Councilman Wuchikowski.
Here.
Mayor Moser.
Present.
Mayor, we note four members present, one absent, and no decor.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to invite Amy Barfield to lead us in prayer.
I have a microphone here you can use also.
Thank you.
Father God, first and foremost, we just welcome you here, Lord God. We are glad that you have given us the opportunity to come, Lord God. Father God, I ask that there would be agreement and unity, Lord God, in the whole community of Menneson, Lord God. Father, there's nothing that you can't do. So, Father, we thank you. Lord, I'd also like to lift a few people up that have some health issues going on, Father. Lord, we know Lois is not feeling well, Lord God. Pastor John's not feeling well, and Joan...
Stress ball.
Stress ball is not feeling well. So, Lord God, we ask that you reach down and touch them with your healing hand, Lord God, and you bring them home safely to us and in good health from the inside out. Father, we give you this time. We invite you here, Lord God. We ask that you would bring peace and unity tonight, Lord God, and that we would be in agreement, Lord, and that it would spread throughout Menneson, Lord God, and that the people would come. Those people that we definitely need, Lord God, the ones that are here living in Menneson, Lord God, let them get up and say, "What can I do to help, Lord?" This is where we live. So, Father God, I ask for your anointing tonight. I thank you for the counsel, Lord God. I thank you that you sent me here, Lord. And, Father, I give you all the honor and praise in your most holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everybody had a chance to look at the previous session meeting minutes from May twenty-second? Somebody please make a motion to...
Mayor, motion to approve the minutes of the previous work session of May eighth, May eighth of two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a second? Is this the eighth or the twenty-second that we have?
That's the twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
All right, let me start over, Mayor. Mayor, a motion to approve the minutes for a work session of May twenty-second of two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call a roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Wuchikowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes. Do we have a report from the treasurer, or we're gonna wait till the next time?
No, what's he gonna do at the next meeting?
Okay, very good. At this time, I would like to invite comment directed at agenda items only.
Ernest Helligrappus, twenty-nine Rex. It's been three weeks since we all met here for a council gathering. So, there's about nine things here that are confronting with my mind here. Number, page two C. What's this ordinance of number eight, to authorize joint participation intergovernmental police and mutual aid agreement? Now, is this a precursor for the SWAT? That it's got anything for the SWAT?
It's a requirement for the SWAT team, yes.
It's a requirement. I figured that. And when is the SWAT team gonna be debated to go on?
They're still a long ways off.
It's still a long ways? All right. Then, who is this Akersor Markenkoff contract? What's that about?
That's our actuary.
Oh. Then, where are you getting the money for paving related contracts?
I will explain that.
You're gonna explain that?
Yep.
Have me a second. I'll wait until you're done. Okay.
Yep.
Um, I was trying to leave early here because Font is gonna talk first. Anyway.
We're moving that.
Tony, where are you, Tom? Let me see here. Okay. This is page four, and it's J. Motion to approve sewerage rehabilitation project phase three. Now, is this more money, or is this like an addition, or what?
Part of the USDA.
Yeah, but that's already been agreed upon from before? Then, why are we bringing it up again?
This is just more progress payments.
Does this have to do with a tank you're supposed to have on Peronti?
Not yet.
It has nothing to do with the tank. So, where's that money gonna come from?
You realize council has done this thirty-one other times at this point, right?
Wait, this particular...
This is number thirty-two.
Okay, but I was also thinking about what happened to the tank on Peronti Boulevard.
That's a different project. We really don't have any information on yet.
I thought that was part of it.
Not yet.
Because I keep seeing all these numbers keep going up and up.
If you take the thirty... This is number thirty-two. If you add them all up, we're in excess of ten million dollars, just for your information.
That's good. And how many more do we gotta go?
Till we get to fifteen.
So, how many we got left?
Who knows?
There's one more here. Going all over the place.
You do realize that everything on the agenda is discussion items, and we will be talking and explaining all these things as we go through it.
Well, sometimes, no. Sometimes you get sidetracked, and you're not answering what's in my mind. Okay, so, the code enforcement activities upcoming CDBG and related hearings. What's that all about?
We're looking at using K-2 for more resources, especially for CDBG.
Are they gonna step in and actually do a code enforcement? So, we don't have to look for anybody else?
No, we still need to look for somebody else.
So, we can't get away with using them?
Not at the price that they have. This is strictly for CDBG activities we're doing right now.
Okay, oh, yeah, and that's what... This paving, Jay, where's the money coming from for that?
I will explain that.
You will? Okay. Make sure you go after him, because I wanna leave early. Anyone else?
Thank you, Ernie. Does anybody have any old business they'd like to bring forth?
No, Mayor.
So, I'd like to... I've got a few comments to make. First off, as Ernie pointed out, we've... If you drive up Ninth Street, you'll notice there's a brand-new pavement there. That's looking very nice. It's the nicest this looked in many years. It is now two lanes. They'll finish the painting on... They'll paint some stripes on it. It'll be two lanes, both directions, on the lower Ninth Street. It'll be what it was many years ago, and that's something that's very good. That is a CDBG project, and that was paid for by CDBG. The McKee was paved as an agreement that we had with the contractor for the phase four project that we did for the sewer project that did all the work around Ninth Street Park. And in the course of that, council up here agreed to supplement the contractor with seven thousand dollars to get that road paved. And that's been paved, and we'll have to put a requisition in for that and get that taken care of. But it is also in better shape than it's been in many years. It's looking really nice. For those that are interested, this has nothing to do with CDBG. This has to do with the water company. They're up at Mont Raven, paving the Mont Raven Loop up there on... Up by the high school, or the elementary school, excuse me. That road should be completed by tomorrow sometime. If it's not done already, it will be completed by this time tomorrow for sure. And I expect it to look... Everybody, it's the same contractor. It'll look outstanding. Anybody that was in town last Friday remembers the storm that we had come through, and it was a pretty ferocious storm. It came down in sheets of water. It's interesting to me that I cannot find any of the weather services that has a weather station in or around Menneson that can tell me the rate of rainfall that we received here. But it was... It had to been several inches in a matter of an hour. We had a river coming down from the city park that was very broad and just flowing at extreme high rate. It got to the new covert that we put at Bart's Garage, and it started trickling over the top of that. And that is really a function... Later that night, we went up and removed the grate. Maybe the grate was some restrictions, maybe it wasn't, but the grate is gone. The grate has been replaced by keep-out signs to keep the kids from playing in there. Hopefully, the kids pay attention. It is not a safe place for anybody to play in that covert, for sure. The VAC truck is down right now, and that's very unfortunate, because all the storm drains have debris in them. The storm drains need to be cleaned, and our VAC truck that's used to clean those storm drains is being repaired. We hope to have that back on the road here very, very soon, but it is still being repaired. Do you have any update on that?
Not as of today.
Okay.
It hasn't improved as of today.
So, anyway, that's going on. Just so everybody understands, Pacific and Marion are... Will be repaved here very soon, too. And that's done by funds from PNG, in that they tore up that road during their gas lines. They've contracted with the city to have that repaved. We've gone out for bids, and we've got the bids. We're waiting for the next meeting so we can actually vote on a motion to move forward with that. So, that's been taken care of. I think that's pretty much the sum of the different things that I wanted to talk about. It's been a very busy week, accented by the storms, and we're gonna move forward with that. So, one of the things I want to talk about real quick before we bring on Dennis Martinak is those people that remember what happened to us when I assumed office. The day I assumed office, some three and a half years ago, almost four years ago, I walked into the city clerk, and I said, "How's the things looking? We got payroll tomorrow." And she looked at me in a straight face and said, "Well, you got seven thousand dollars in the bank, and you got a payroll of seventy thousand dollars." It was no fun. We went to DCED, and that triggered a whole bunch of things. At that time, they came from Harrisburg to visit with me, not once, but twice. Twice, they offered to allow me to take the City Act forty-seven. I refused in both cases. Now, I fully intend on continuing that whole philosophy, but one of the things that they've done is they have something they call a stamp program. This is not to be confused with what used to be called the early intervention. It is not the same thing. The stamp program is a very limited resource that is provided by DCED, and the purpose of the stamp program is to provide opportunity to the city. They will come to us with numerous different possibilities for getting funding and different ways to drive the city forward. One of those opportunities will be Act forty-seven, but that's one of eighty or so that they'll be giving to us. And that's not the direction that we're trying to go. We're trying to bring in industry. We're trying to bring in people. We're trying to build this city back up, and that's the primary goal of that. With that, I'd like to invite Dennis Martinak to come and give us a little presentation. He is the person that was assigned to us by our... Just as everybody understands this, we all agreed to do the stamp program a year and a half ago. And the problem... After that first time that happened, when DCED came down here, I worked with the HUD, and we entered into what's called the DCTA, distressed communities technical assistance. And they assigned two teams to us. One was the development team, one was the financial analysis team. The point being is, those teams have done their job and moved on. So, now, we're working with the stamp program. The stamp program is gonna take those programs that were started by the economic group and continue them forth and move forward with them. So, Dennis, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Well, come up here where you can be... Yeah, and here's the microphone. Yeah.
Thank you for the introduction. Again, I'm Dennis Martinak. I'm the proprietor and principal of D. Martinak Planning and Consulting. I live in Allenport. I'm pretty familiar with Menneson. A lot of my relatives grew up in Menneson.
My best friend.
Yes.
They only knew each other.
Yes.
Good dream.
Yeah, good to see everybody. So, picking up on what the mayor was discussing, I have worked on three, completed three projects through the stamp process, two boroughs, Elizabeth and Chaleroi, and about two years ago, finished up one for Green County. The Green County was looking to do the same thing. Also, we're just started probably about twenty-five percent in with the city of Uniontown. So, very familiar with the process, and as Mayor alluded to, George Newsom has a real strong interest in trying to help communities as they move forward, especially with... In looking at some of the components of the strategic... Stamp is the Strategic Management Planning Program. It did morph out of the EIP program, but again, it's now allowed communities to do a lot more, to look at a lot more things related to their community. You can do a lot, look at some unique things. One of the things that we approach it as is, one, there's probably four parts to it. One is the education component, where we want to make sure everybody's on the same page, understanding why we're doing it, what some of our team members are looking at. Second part of that is the financial end of things. Then, the community and economic development. I guess I can combine those. So, we look at on those, and the last part ties into the whole thing is because we want to make sure that... We're trying to find ways that the community can enhance their tax base, either support businesses that are here, or try to find businesses that can come in. And that's part of, you know, at a higher level, but again, working to ensure that we're looking at the finances for the city. One of our team members is Rebecca Vargo. Rebecca is the Wilkins Township manager. Rebecca has a very strong... She's very well-respected at the state. She also works as a peer consultant in that capacity. So, she would be on the team, and then also Tammy Stenson, who works with McMillan Engineering. She's a planner who also would be working with me as far as the economic development side of things, community development side of things. That process typically runs about nine months. Rebecca would basically be... She would look at a four-year prior history of the city's finances and then project out three years or so. One of the things they ask is that we try to prioritize five projects. Somewhere in that neighborhood could be, you know, plus one, minus one. But the reason they do that is typically when those projects are listed there, they have a better chance of getting funded. And if I can tell you from the projects that we've worked on, some of those priority projects, a lot of them were being worked on and funded as we were even finishing the project. So, they're that important to the community. The stamp program, again, is very beneficial. It does help the communities out, and it does offer them some flexibility to move some things forward. But it does give you also kind of that outside view of your financials, your budgeting, things like that. So, again, that's kind of our spiel. Again, like I said, we've worked on these. We have a pretty good relationship with the folks at DCED, especially George Newsom on this side of things. And also, working with George when we identify these programs and projects for the city, he'll also do some of the... Kind of the legwork and some of the coordination with some of the other agencies at the state, trying to help the city. So, that's pretty much... I mean, is there any... I mean, questions, I guess, is what would be my next thing on there?
Council, have any questions?
I got a bunch of questions.
Go for it. Now's your chance.
Be careful. You mentioned Elizabeth.
Yes.
What exactly did you do, and where were they when they started it, and where are they now?
Elizabeth, they were... They were having a little bit of financial, I guess... It wasn't distress, but they wanted to make sure they were on the right path, and that's pretty much what the program did. So, that's one of the big differences from the EIP. The EIP was pretty much people that were going into the EIP program. I mean, I'm preaching to the choir. You know, they were probably in a little more dire straits. Elizabeth wanted to sort out some things, but one of their priority projects was they were looking at downtown, but they also needed some guidance. So, one of our priority recommendations for them was to get a borough manager. And they do... Scott Craighead, I think, is still down there, but he was brought on board to do that. So, that was one of the things that they moved forward on. And the reason that a lot of communities look to that first is because there's a program that allows... The state that allows them to bring that person on board, and there's a graduated scale where they'll pay a hundred percent. Then, as they can move forward, that starts to get reduced, but that borough manager is also helping find funding for the community as well. So, it helps personnel. Actually, the fourth part of what I should've said before was we also look at the organizational structure of employees and folks like that.
Well, we did that already, and that happened four, six years ago?
Okay.
No, six, seven, eight, eight years ago.
You did everything for this being done in the stamp program?
Well, they... It paid for... At the city administer.
Okay.
For the first year, the second year, then it was... It went down after that. So, I mean, my problem I have with this is we've been there, done that on a lot of this for the... Like, the comprehensive plan, went through all that and everything else. And I was going through the stamp program, and it caught my eye at the very end where we matched sixty-five hundred dollars to the rest of... We were approved for the grant. I know this may sound harsh, but my question is, what are we getting for sixty-five hundred dollars? Because we spent ten thousand dollars that we had to spend for the comprehensive plan, and it didn't squat. I mean, absolutely nothing. And I'm very apprehensive that I'm not... I'm looking for... If you could answer me something that was concrete that came out of what you're working with. Now, this isn't directed at you, but I mean, I'm... I'm just trying to wrap my head around what more of an advantage this is going to do besides being required by DCED. And maybe they're the ones that I need to ask this question to, but I would hope that you would, that where's this gonna go?
Well, as I... This is different than the comp plan. The comp plan looks more from a... It looks at all the different elements. I mean, you guys know that you went through the process. You look at everything from transportation through housing to recreation to land use. The stamp, which is more financial-based and also more focused, is those five recommendations that come out of that. They're gonna come out through this process in working with council, mayor, staff. Everybody's gonna be involved in that process. And what you're gonna get out of that is recommendations to... And I can't honestly say what they are right now, Tony, because I don't know. But again, I know you guys went through this, but you are gonna get that look for the past four years. You're gonna get a three-year... You're gonna look three years into the future also, helping you with your budgeting and finance for the city.
But I'm looking for that magic bullet, and I'm expecting the state to come back and say, "Well, you're gonna have to do this, 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 and this, and it's gonna get you to this, 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 and this." I don't see it.
Well, that would come through the process as you move through the process of doing this program. Those things will be identified in the next six to nine months, what you're gonna do specific to this program. There could be some things we could look at that weren't... Maybe they weren't implemented through the comp plan. You may want to incorporate some of that towards this.
Well, one of the things that was just absolutely ludicrous during the comp plan was the recommendation was that all the council had a laptop, and we needed businesses like Starbucks. That was the early intervention plan.
That was the EIP.
Okay. Again, tell me what we're doing concrete for the city that's going to be able to move it past where it is right now.
As I'm badly mistaken, I think that comes from working together with the city to determine what kind of five projects that we are looking for and how those projects get funded. That we've talked about numerous different things here in the city that we can do. This is a way to get funding for those different projects.
Yeah, I guess that I can't sit here and... If I knew what they were coming into this, then we probably wouldn't have to go through the study. It'd probably be pretty quick to get it finished. But this is more sitting down with everybody here, working through this, and then identifying what everybody thinks is the most important projects or recommendations for the city. I know that doesn't quite answer your question, but it...
No, it doesn't. I mean, like, do you have any... Can you give me any examples of like with Elizabeth or where else you're doing it? Where did they... And Ernie complains about this all the time. Where did you generate, or did they generate any new businesses to come in? How did they get them to come in? How did they market them? Where did they get the funds to market them? Where did they do... I mean, these are all things that, at the end of the day, there's a hardcore number that somebody has to pay, and we could be the best thing in the world, but if you don't have it, you don't have it.
Well, I can tell you, there were some new businesses that did come in. I don't have that. I could find it out for you and get it if you want. I can get you that. I can tell you that out of all three of those STMPs that we finished on the financial side, I know changes were made at each of the boroughs in the way they did some of their accounting, the way they spent funds, the way they accounted for them. And I know Green County also did some of that as well, and they did that at a higher level, you know, at the county level. So, things... Changes were made, you know, based on the results of the study.
Yeah, but did the tax base increase?
Uh, it probably did, only because some of the things that Rebecca, some of the recommendations she made, saved them money in what they did.
Okay. And is there... What's the timeframe?
It's typically about a nine-month process to get to... Because this is gonna dovetail into your budget season. In the beginning, we'll probably sit down, because I think Rebecca needs another month or two to get caught up, and then she'll come, and she'll kind of jump in here. But we're gonna... I'll be working... Tammy and myself will be working with you all to talk about some of the economic and community development side of things for the plan.
And one of the things, too, that we were thinking, that the recommendation of council was that we've got this state LSA grant for seventy-five thousand dollars for development, economic development of this downtown area here, primarily focused across the street from Fifth to Sixth Street on Donner, but it is not limited to that.
I thought this is totally different than that.
No, it is. And what I'm saying... Let me finish. What we're saying is, we also went looking for somebody to run this program, and we chose Dennis Martinak to do the job that he had, because it really fits in well with what the stamp program is and allows even further more economic development that we're talking about. And that was upon the recommendation of council.
Really? This is the first thing I'm hearing his name.
You refused to allow us to run it on our own. You said, "Find somebody to run this project, this LSA project." This is who we came up with.
That's the one that Diane had written a grant for you, or helped write the grant for you, Diane Altland?
Yeah, for seventy-five thousand.
Yes, and she is part of... She's a big piece of that, because at the end of that, there's gonna be a conceptual plan for that block or, you know, what can be done with it over there. And there's also the planning component, and that's why they asked... You know, talking to Diane, that's why they asked me to just do the planning and land use piece of that.
And again, and this has nothing, forgive me, about with you.
Yes.
But then, we went through, and you were in touch with, and I don't remember the company, from Philadelphia. L S something?
Excuse me?
Who was the company from L S, or somebody was working with DCED?
PFM.
PFM for finances?
Yeah.
Okay, we went through all that, and nothing changed there either, except the only difference is it didn't cost us anything. This is gonna cost us something.
This also has a state behind it, whereas...
The other one's supposed to have the state, because the state's the one that turned around and told us to use them.
No, it was the HUD that turned around and told us to use them.
Oh, that's even worse yet. It was the federal government that told us how to use them. So, we've had everybody keep telling us how to do this and what to do, and at the very end of the day, we have nothing.
The bottom line is that I am banking on this stamp program providing us, and this is a result of my conversation with Newsom and others at DCED, that they will provide us with opportunities for funding projects that we target. So, we target a project, and I don't know what these targets might be. I can... I've got my own ideas, but I think that council as a whole and the city as a whole needs to be involved with this. We come up with a series of projects. They will help us find funding to get those. Maybe, just as an example, maybe it's something to do with the music in the park. Music in the park is great, but it's subject to weather. What if we were to use the landmark building and do something there? There might be funding there to help us get that renovated and turn it into a theater, but that's just one possible thing. There's a, a, anything that they, the whole concept, as it was explained to me, is not entirely different from what the, the N P P project is. They want to invest a little bit of money into a project and it brings along industry beside it to make it, make it a much bigger project. This has been, happened at, at, uh, West, West, uh, New Kensington, excuse me. New Kenzie?
Where, did, would, so, tell me some concrete things that come out of what, what your recommendation for where you were working with the cities or boroughs or wherever, that had to do with infrastructure. Because the single biggest thing here is the roads. It's the single biggest thing. Where would this help in trying to get federal, state, more different funding? Something along that nature that could do with it, like the mayor just said, put a, start to put a dent in it. Does this fall into that category too, or is that too broad?
Typically, that comes out of your comprehensive plan. Now, I, I know you're, I know you guys did it, but it seems like it. But if that's something that's of importance that wasn't implemented in the comp plan, we could certainly talk to George and ask them how we can structure that into this. Because that's typically outside of the scope of, of what we're looking at here. But if you want me to talk to, I can ask the three communities, um, that we worked on. I mean, there's a number of these plans going on across the state, but I could ask them and try to get you guys a list if you're, if you're interested in.
And, and don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm not just dead set a hundred percent, no, I'm not for this, I don't care. I just, we've been there, done it, got a T-shirt for it. I wanna make sure we just don't get another T-shirt, that we're actually gonna get something tangible out of it. Because we have some game in it. Being at sixty-five hundred dollars or what? We have game in this.
Right.
So, I want my sixty-five hundred dollars for the city.
I would not expect anything less.
Well, this is not a motion. This is not a motion. There's no tabling to be done.
I'm just here for discussion.
This is just a discussion. I do appreciate you coming. Does anybody else have any questions they like to?
Just one last question. What is the deadline or time that council has to consider acting upon this for you to effectively be able to do what you need to do?
I don't know when the grant was actually awarded, so I'm not sure what the, the, I haven't seen the, 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 it wasn't mapped. But it was through the stamp, but there are deadlines in there, so I, I don't have that with me, so I don't, honestly don't know. We could, yeah, we can find, find it out.
If it's got something good for the city, we need to act soon, but yes. Well, thank you very much, I do appreciate you coming forward, introducing yourself and so forth. Thank you very much. The next thing on the, the agenda is a discussion of ordinance number eight. And this has to do with the, uh, the SWAT team. But, um, basically, in order to be part of the SWAT team, we have to have a mutual aid agreement with the, the other governmental agencies that are part of the SWAT team, is that correct?
Yeah, this is the ordinance, um, that was voted on at the May voting meeting to be at the test.
Right. Um, we brought it up here because, uh, we need to have our reading of it at the next meeting, is that correct?
The second reading and it, it's ripe for approval as well.
So, this is the first reading of it?
Is that what you already did the first reading and motion to advertise?
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Anybody wanna talk any more about that? Um, this one's kinda neat, this is interesting. Discussion concerning the railroad encroachments within the city of Monestor. Yay, hey, we finally got them to respond. You wanna explain to them where we're at with that?
It can be quite lengthy, so if you wanna move it to the end of the meeting, I wouldn't mind.
We can wait. Force everybody to stick around a little bit.
The railroad finally got back to the city, um, with what they call an encroachment agreement. Kind of a good news, bad news situation. I sent council and city administrator an email, I think last week, last week, yep, June second. Um, there's three one-time license fees that need to be paid. For the crossing at Third Street in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Um, Fifth Street, six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And Perenny Boulevard, um, for eighteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, well, the good news is it's a one-time license fee. And I've seen these that are annual fees. Um, this could, of course, be paid out of the U S D A project fund as it's directly related to that. Um, part two of this, there are some insurance requirements that the city is going to have to obtain a policy for. Um, your typical workers' comp policies, your commercial general liability. Um, but the big one's going to be the railroad protective liability insurance. Uh, basically, if somebody's working in and around, uh, a railroad, the project owner's required to get this insurance in case somebody gets hit by a train. Um, a, a good policy to have, not really a concern that the city has because there'll be no excavating, um, within the railroad right of way. Nonetheless, the railroad's requiring it, um, and we're working with your insurance adjuster to see how much those policies would cost. Um, those policies will be, also be able to be paid out of the project funds. Uh, this may, might be ready for council's approval next meeting, it just depends on if we get the information about the insurance policies.
That was the only negative, really?
Um, I, I would call this all good news. Uh, really was worried that there would be an annual, um, license agreement fee.
Can we put toll booths up?
For the railroads? No.
Before the railroad, before you get there?
Where does the railroad begin and end?
Where the tracks are.
Oh, you mean for cars?
Yes. Twenty-five cents.
I don't think that many cars cross.
It's a nickel, how's that?
And the railroad did want to know who and what the address of this Ernie guy at the meeting always asking about this was. So, he thinks you're paying the bill, so if you can get with Mr. Corpashen, get that information, it'd be appreciated.
Thank you. I, I think that this is really a major step forward, to be real honest with you, that, uh, we now finally have something from the railroad we can act upon. Right, and we've had insight to the contractors working on the projects, sitting around doing other things, waiting for this to happen. So, we can actually turn this loose and make, get it going free. Is there anything we can talk about on the cliffs?
Yeah, Cleveland Cliffs, um, in a similar situation. The easement language is all agreed upon, working through some of those insurance issues, uh, as well. That's behind the railroad.
Once you get across the railroad, you're on, you're on to the, on to Cleveland Cliffs property.
Yeah, but it, it may end up being outside of the railroad liability policy, it just may be the, the same policy. Well, I mean, Cleveland Cliffs, there's gonna be excavation work because they have to install at least two manholes.
And those are being paid for out of the, the U S D A fund, yes. This is, absolutely.
So, we're working through those final issues and... It, it took the railroad, um, and Councilman Nestor just asked how long this took. Um, the city initially submitted its application probably early fall last year. Resubmitted the information, I think, in January. Um, and, and we heard back, I, I think it was last week on June second.
It's, it's a good thing. I think we're finally going to see the remainder of the U S D A project being able to be wrapped up here very soon. It's still, the goal, they finish that before the end of the year. And that's what I'm hopeful for.
And this was the major holdup, um, for that portion of the project.
Absolutely.
It was their engineering team that was reviewing this.
Claiming all the engineers.
Not the city's engineer, the railroad's.
I understand. The other thing that we did is I had a meeting with K two engineering and, uh, talked to them quite a bit. With C D B G, we've gotten, uh, some demolition funds associated with the C D B G project. It includes property that is not within the ARPA zone that the county is doing, that, uh, we need to get moving on. We, and because we don't have a current code engi, uh, code enforcement officer that can do the proper, um, you know, notifications and so, the paperwork and, and all that. Uh, K two engineering said that they would do it. It will probably work out on an average of about one hundred dollars per property for him to go in, uh, do all the paperwork. Pictures, appear before, uh, public hearings, all, all that it requires. Uh, we used to enjoy the activities of Marvin to do. So, with that, we're going to continue moving forward with that project. It could have been. I think that the, uh, the, the thing that we, we need to do is, is make sure we get enough time from K two engineering to get all these things done because they, they are very slim on time. The next thing is, uh, copy related issues that we, for City, uh, City Hall. And I circulated a, a stack of pa... Yeah.
I had a question. Right before I came here, I saw an ad in the paper for a full-time position for a code officer. And I, I didn't know that we had decided a full-time, to hire someone full-time.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was discussed. So, what happened was, when, prior to like, we had our conversation on the phone, on council, we all agreed to have the advertisement for a full-time code. And then that's when we went through the whole interview process. And after you and I go on the phone, I go off mic and I talk to Joey, we were able to re-advertise that without, what was it? That we were able to read?
Purchase order.
No, um, but we didn't have to vote for a re, uh...
Oh, because you authorized that.
Because we already authorized advertisement. So, that's the re-advertising from the previous advertisement for when we really didn't get to hire anyone because the person quit on us.
Okay, so are you still gonna have Lloyd?
We'll still have Lloyd, yes.
Yeah.
So, we'll have a full-time and a part-time.
We'll see what we can find.
Because I'm just, I'm surprised when I saw this.
The other question on there is, and I thought we talked about this, if, that was in today's paper?
Yes.
Okay. My question was on the top, and Karen pointed this out to me, it says salary. What's it say, as experience or?
Base.
It's on experience.
I thought we have a ceiling limit, what we could pay.
We may have, and that may be all that we can do.
But shouldn't we put, tell someone that upfront before you, when you advertise?
Well, we see what kind of response we get and we can address that. I don't wanna scare somebody off before we have the opportunity to talk about it.
Okay. I, I just thought we would take what we pay, what we paid Marvin and put that salary in there. Because that's what we have budgeted to pay that salary.
That's another reason why we need the stamp program, maybe that's one of our, our things that we need to draw upon.
I agree with you, but that's certainly not gonna happen for at least a year.
Well, that's not true at all.
Well, by the time the state gets involved and starts doing things, it'll be, we'll be sitting here this time next year and they'll still be talking.
Hopefully not the case. Hopefully, it'll move far, much quicker than that. And, and it probably will, I mean, how long did it take them from the time that, uh, I took office? It was here that same week, they, you got a problem here.
Well, a problem, yeah.
And they, they came up with solutions too, that we all acted upon and did. Let's don't burn the, burn the, the town down before we find out what, what we got here. Which, uh... You don't wanna talk about it anymore before I move on?
No, I'm ready for garbage bills.
Let's talk copiers before we talk garbage bills. We've got, we've got a co, we've got two Xerox printer, a copier's right now, one here and one at the police station. The one here, the contract runs out, I believe, in November or December of this year. The one at the police?
No, it was December, it was the end of December, January.
No, there's, there's nine months left. This contract originally had a provision where you didn't have to make any payments for three months. So, you, you didn't make any payments, then you have sixty payments remaining. And, and the contract had eleven, there were nine months here and eleven months at the police station.
That's not what, I have to read the agreement again, but that's not the way I read it.
I have all the information here and, uh, my purpose to be here is to clear the air on all these issues. And if you would need savings, technology, and a company to stand in that.
Before we get into a sales, a sales pitch, and I don't wanna go down that path right now. We, we've made conversation, we made contact with numerous different companies that have different opportunities. Whether it's implemented in a couple of months, whether it's implemented in, in another year, I don't know. But the bottom line is that at some point, we needed to talk about what we're doing. We have our current Xerox, uh, plan and we've got a discounted plan that they, they've come forward with. There's, uh, Toshiba, Konica, Ford, uh, Ford has a, a Kaya Sera project, project. Precision has a, a, uh... Sharp project. And there's different, different numbers that we come back with, 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 with prices and so forth. And one thing I wanna make sure council really understands, it's like buying an S U V. You can go buy yourself a Hyundai Versa for twenty-one thousand dollars. Or you can go buy yourself a Porsche Cayenne for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They both have four-wheel drive, they both will get you from point A to point B. It's just what kind of features you have along the ways to work with. And it's really hard to compare different manufacturers because different manufacturers have different, different things that they can offer, different services, different, different, uh, features uh, and so forth. We tried our best to try to take it to what we're doing now and compare it apples to apples, to the best of our ability. And we, 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 in all cases, um... We think that we're, we're looking at something that's very comparable to what we have now. I will say that if you look at this, the cost of buying versus the cost of, of leasing, cost of leasing is far better. And that's because there must be some value to, to the Z, the machine after you finish leasing it. And I assume that you could buy a machine and sell it too, if you had a storefront, if you had salesman, if you had all that it takes to sell a specialized piece of equipment. So, in my, my humble opinion, I think that leasing is by far the, the smart way to do it. Keeps our costs down, minimizes our exposure. And just like these, these copier, this Xerox we have now is becoming more and more problemsome and the more we use it. Um, in five years from now, we'll, we'll be looking at another one as well. And by that time, they'd probably be better, cheaper and everything else, just the way technology does. I'm not trying to advocate anything other than I did provide some information on all these different ones that we're looking at. You guys are welcome to take this with you, look at it. Um, if you want additional information on any of the, the products, I'd be more than happy to, to provide it.
Well, when I did this and I put half of this together when I gave this to Linda, my argument that I told all the companies, all of them, when I was contacted, was I was rather leaning towards purchase versus a lease. A lease is ridiculous. Over the six years, you're paying over forty thousand dollars for a machine that's how many years old? And, and you don't get nothing out of it. I mean, the analogy about the minivan and the Porsche is great, but if you wanna drive a Porsche, you're not gonna own that Porsche after three or, after three years, thirty-six thousand miles. You're gonna turn it in unless you have a buyout of close to probably seventy or sixty thousand. But the reason you lease is for only one reason. You can't really afford the car you want because you can't afford to buy it. So, I'm looking, I looked at the same thing as for these machines. I mean, at the, at the, at the current lease of two machines, there's over forty thousand dollars. And I'm not just picking on Xerox, I'm picking on any of them. I mean, some of them versus purchasing them for twelve and fifteen thousand dollars.
Well, by the time you get to twelve or fifteen thousand dollars, you gotta have a service agreement that goes with it.
That was the thing though. I asked everybody, all the same questions, and I said, "Give me a price with just a service contract." Give me a price of the machine, just so you know, I'm just making this. And I want a price for the service contract. And some came back and said, "Okay, well, it's, it's this much, we can give you a service contract." And it's so many, so many, uh, pennies per page, okay, or whatever, okay? And I said, "Okay, give me that, but no, I don't want that. I want just a service contract." Like, whenever your dryer or something blows up at home and you have a service contract on it. Like, whenever your dryer or something blows up at home, and you have a service contract on it, all right? It's not gauged on how many roll, how many loads of laundry you put into it, it, it's a service contract. I said, we're paying for the ink already, it makes no difference.
No, 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 the ink comes as part of the service contract.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying. They said to me, no, it's part of the service contract. I said, but we could buy the ink anywhere at a reduced rate.
And you're gonna pay about the same price when it, when you finally get done.
So what's the reason for me to have a, have it all wrapped in? There was, there's no advantage to it. So I wanted a price just on-
There's no disadvantage.
There's a better way.
I think the units-
All valid points, we were all discussing, but to shed light on it from a consultant standpoint, I wanna clear the air on the best way to acquire copiers. We didn't talk, or, um, we didn't qualify you previously for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania State Local Government Contract, because you had time left on your lease, you had a year left on your lease, and there's no provision to cancel the remainder of the lease that's in place. And we asked, and, and you had a competitor coming in with some, all the leases under, we applied for a special, uh, called SMA, Special Marketing Exception, and now we've got that type of contract, and you make one month payment, it saves you a hundred bucks a month, which you currently spend it. You have the, the best state-of-the-art equipment that you can dream of, it doesn't even more than what you have right now. Your costs are fixed, for the forty-eight month terms, forty-eight month rental. At the end of forty-eight months, if you wanna keep renting it month to month, you can do that as long as you want. Or at that point, there's probably a new technology, I can do it in the news, or something else. But this one, you make one payment, it goes in the machine, supplies, it shows, the parts, everything. There's nothing down. You take out the old machines, put the minimums in, network things, set them up, and train your own room, and it's a, a warranty package, I mean, it's, it's the best way to acquire a copier, is that, from the sales standpoint, you don't really like it, because you don't want to pay any money on it. Because the cost, the cost is cut so low on this, I feel I'm doing a service investment, and often it's, and it's absolutely the best that we can do. And it serves you for a long time.
My problem is, and thank you for that information, but what my problem is, and I, I can't attest to this, I would defer this to the mayor and our city administrator, and anybody else that's here, is I've heard nothing but bad things about service. Service has been horrendous. I've heard, I've heard the mayor numerous times that the copiers are down, or something's not working, and it's like, what's the response time? Is it four hours? Is it eight hours? Is it, what, what is, what are you guaranteeing a response time? I'm in IT, I have to guarantee a response time.
There's no guaranteed response time, but we try to get there within four hours, or the same day, which is good response time for our industry average, and, um-
I can appreciate that, but that's not good enough for City Hall. There's too many things that can happen here, that have to get printed, that are, could be critical, that I can't, I would not think I would want everybody to sit around for eight hours waiting for somebody, for a technician to show up.
Correct.
And what happens if they come, and they don't have the part? Now, are you going to overnight a brand-new copier here to make sure we're up and running? I mean, these are things-
No, nobody does that, but we have everything in stock, we cover all Southwestern Pennsylvania, uh, we have more technicians than any other company in business. We're the world leader in this business. If you're unhappy with service, I did have constantly in contact with Lloyd, uh, before it caused some milling issues, and some service issues. And overall, looking at your service history, which I did, the, the machines will work fairly well. When they get to the forty-year form, and so this is where they're at now, you start to see the technician move more often because of the single start and whether. That's why this forty-eight month plan, forty-eight month rental, is best, because you can update technology in four years without having to do nothing. There's no even charges to remove the equipment if you need to lease.
And, but I would ask the question to everybody else, but you're here unfortunately, so there's not like everybody else that's here for me to ask, but my question is, why didn't, or why would not Xerox do that already?
What already?
Prove, prov- promote or switch out, say after three or four years, and say, wow, these are battle wagons. We're gonna upgrade you to the newer technology, no cost, because you still have time on your contract, instead of fighting con- you know, continuous service calls or things like that. My question to you is, why wouldn't Xerox already do that?
Well, I've been doing this for about, since, you know, about sixteen, or this last, I came in and gave Michael a Ford using a Papan contract, which is a state contract, which municipality can buy from, and then you can have to bid if you use the Papan contract. But that doesn't provide for the unlimited usage. The contract negotiated and we're proposing, it's the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, it's for all the state offices, it's for any local municipality, uh, the government entity, or any state.
I appreciate that, but I don't care about government interest.
And I couldn't do it before, because you couldn't cancel a random payment that you have. I knew the equipment was starting to go down, so I was gonna update it, and just submit product, uh, your cost would be a little bit less, like the numbers. Uh, now they're gonna be a, a bit less, and in today's economy, I mean, when you stay running on anything, it's good. But, uh, we couldn't cancel those payments using the Commonwealth contract. We've got a special exception to cancel eleven payments left here, and nine payments left there. And the other thing that we were doing is, we're gonna take this yank down here, and have a technician go over it thoroughly, and put that upstairs as a convenience machine, so if, uh, one of the machines is done, you have another one back ended up.
For how long?
For however long you want. And the, the other thing is, that's ten bucks a month for the service, and supplies on, and the, the meter charge, less than a penny per page. You know, so there, and they're not looking at real high volume up there either, so, you know, it might be a mix of forty dollars a month to show.
So, a- and while you're here, cause mayor, I'd ask it, I, I don't know what this is, there's the black and white fifty-five hundred, forty-five hundred, or fifty-four hundred dollars. What is that? Is that the one at the police station?
Yes. The, uh, it's interesting, cause I asked Linda to, uh, give me some estimations of how many pay, uh, prints we're doing here and at the police station. We do fifty-five hundred here, forty-five hundred at the police station.
So-
That's just a typical average.
According to this, and you don't have this in front of you, so I'm, I'm not quite sure, I'll have to ask the mayor or, or our city administrator if this is right. There's a current Xerox, and then there's the Xerox Co-Stars, and he's talking about the Co-Stars, my friend.
That's his new plan that he just brought forward, yes.
Okay, so if that's the case.
Hmm?
That's on the, it's on Co-Stars. This is a contract between Xerox and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Which is a Co-Star. That is what Co-Star is, is co- states con- the contracts with the-
Co-Stars is a separate contract, there's no Co-Star contract that gives you unlimited uses. This is, uh, the Commonwealth contract is a special contract, is Xerox negotiated with the state, they're making a contract, and it's the lowest cost program I've ever-
So it's not on here?
Uh, it, that is the, the last one he gave us.
I, I brought you, you, uh, current copy. No, the last one, when I was here last time, it expired at the end of May.
Thank you.
And unfortunately, they told us it was kind of, had a small price increase. Turned up about ten dollars a month, but it's because of, you know, the world economic conditions.
So it's gone up a little bit?
Yeah, ten bucks, but if you look at the blue payment, five hundred forty-three dollars a month for both machines, it saves you a hundred dollars a month. Forty-eight hundred dollars over four years. There's no money down, training, installation, networking, brand-new stuff, state-of-the-art. And it's, you know, a heck of a program. There were no charges, it's a shorter plan.
Do, do we currently have this one set up for fax?
No.
So our fax is somewhere else?
We have a separate, we have a separate machine sitting right beside it that is faxed.
Okay, I see.
And it's, it's always an issue.
I'm gonna leave this with you also. This is the, uh, actual contract. And these are, if you want to look forward, we, we want this to-
Give it to our solicitor, I think, I can look at it.
Keep the originals, send me a-
Yeah, it's the same contract, it's all same, local, uh, municipalities, as you're an expert.
Well-
You know, I know you guys got so much going on, running the city and everything, and everything that you go through. Um, my goal was to make this as easy as possible, and I can look at all those different proposals that you have, and I can pick them all apart, and show you what you're not getting, and what you are getting, and what the advantage might be, and the disadvantage, and, you know, I'm willing to do that, uh, if you would, if you would press the time button to sit down. Do you know, just make the appointment, and, uh-
Well, if we're gonna do that, I would also invite manufacturers from them to come in and give, do the same to you as well, so it's, it's whatever.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I mean, you know, working company, we've been serving well for years, but at first, when I was in the, when you were, uh, the other place, uh, they had like, six machines that were leased, and they didn't let pay, and they didn't even know what they were paying, or when they were paying, and they bought out all those leases and specialized printing systems, which they didn't do know. And that was the biggest, that was, you're saving like, five hundred dollars a month at that point.
Mm-hmm. I remember.
So, you can't bring this to the booth tonight, can you?
No.
No.
This is a work session, this is not a voting session.
I have a question.
Yes.
I see that it says coverage excludes paper, okay, that's right. Cause I thought, boy, if you include a paper, that would be like, the biggest deal ever, cause paper's expensive.
No, it's everything but the paper, basically.
If you include staple cartridges, and those things are seventy-five bucks a piece.
Wow.
So, that's one benefit that always does to not have the full coverage.
So this is like everybody else's auto refill?
Yes, the machines that work it reports the Xerox, when the supply number gets to shut, and you said they don't actually ship out further. And they only give you backups after you get some issue with the right thing. I try to make it as simple as possible. I have a proposal generator, I just wanna tell you a short story, we're talking about tech roles we all won't know. But, uh, you know, it actually has artificial intelligence, so you can, uh- It uses artificial intelligence in that.
Inside of it.
In- inside joke.
Well, remember, scriptable draws, if you do a full set, it's up on there, but there's one touch scan, and if you want, it's an intelligent scan, four cameras.
Oh, that reminds me. Are these capable for doing, uh, secure print?
Absolutely, yeah. And they're also, the other, you know, these, these are full color machines, pink compared to black and whites, you have the more advanced machines for less than the cost of the back home, it's, uh, I mean-
So you set up the secure print also?
Yeah, well, secure print is just, when you print something, uh, and you send the printer, and you just put on secure print, and you put a four-digit code in, and then you come from the machine, and then it's done, and it pulls out.
I know that, but you still have to still set it up ahead of time, for employees to have their own four-digit code.
No, they, we, they, they walk and they print something.
No, that's not what-
Securely, okay, you're talking about accounting, that was-
No, no, I'm talking secure co-print, where I'm given one, two, three, four, six. I print my print jobs, they sit in a queue until I go upstairs, well, a little maddened, cause the other one would be up there, but if it wouldn't be, and we had the one, they could come down at the end of the day, put one, two, three, four, six, and all their print jobs will come out.
Yeah, that's our special.
Okay, but I mean, you would be able to set that up?
Absolutely, and we also can set up four camera too. So since these machines are, are color, I guess it doesn't matter though, because, uh, the colors are included, compared. Whereas, not included in other contracts, you can go to access the color.
Well-
Only depending on the stock, and things like that.
In any case, I'd like to try to bring this to, to, and then move on to the next one, if you could.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine, and, uh, that's good, and until, uh, July twelfth.
Okay, thank you.
You're in, so, so at least it's coming up, or you, you make the side orders?
Two weeks.
Two weeks?
Two weeks is a-
Yep.
But yeah, if you get to, in the meantime, I'll contact everyone who's on there, call me anytime, you can email, whatever, any questions you have, exactly the answer.
Okay, thank you.
All right. You won't be in this all winter, please, please?
No, everybody else did.
Thanks for letting us know.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good day.
The, uh, garbage bills that we wanna talk about is a pretty simple little thing, and this is really because there was such a debacle that occurred when we did the garbage bills last year. I wanna make sure that we don't do the same thing again this year. That, um, as it was, there is a processing cost, that it costs a city to process garbage bills. You can make one payment, they enter it into the system, and it's a one-time deal, it requires a, uh, somebody from the Treasury Department, one, one transaction. You do it four times, once every quarter, we put a slight premium on it of a couple bucks, to, to cover the, 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 the additional processing time, doing it four times a year, as opposed to once a year. Then we did monthly, and we dropped it down to no additional cost. And what it's really done, is this caused all kinds of headaches in the Treasury Department, for them just keeping track of the monthly payments. And it's not being very well managed by the people either. It, it's difficult for them to understand, they gotta come in and make the payment every month, they forget, blah, blah, blah. It's just a, a management nightmare doing monthly things. If we're gonna offer monthly payments, we need to make sure that we, we, we put a little bit of a premium on it, so we can cover the notifications, the additional time that it takes their, our Treasury Department to, to process those. And that's the only thing I really wanted to get across during this, this work session. We're not at the point that we wanted to find what the, the, the garbage bills are gonna be next year. We know what the amount's gonna be, but when we sit down and start figuring this all out, we need to look at that, and make sure we do it appropriately, fairly, and across the board.
So tell me, what's the percentage of people that have set up monthly accounts?
I don't know that number.
That'd be a first place we gotta start, because if it's a very low number, I'm, I'm looking distant, going, sorry, it's not difficult.
But it's taken a lot of time, it truly is.
Simple spreadsheet, put their name in.
Simple spreadsheets are not simple when you're trying to do accounting like this.
I, sorry, can't, can't go there on that one. I don't believe that.
Well, what we got now is not working, is all I can say. The, um, like I say, it's nothing other than, than, uh, a recommendation that we come up with a plan that's, that's more workable with the Treasury Department. Um, the AccureSure Mock and Hop contract. As everybody's well aware, Mock and Hop is somebody we've been used for an actuary for, for quite some time. How they came to be within the city, I don't really know, don't really care, but they were bought out by AccureSure. And AccureSure is taking over the, the Mock and Hop, uh, contract that they have with us. In talking with all the other actuaries that are out there, there's a couple things that come to, to, to mind. First off, if we're gonna change actuaries, that requires that it start at the pension board. The pension board has to, to recommend changing the actuaries, and, and, uh, go there first. And then it has to have, uh, a bidding process, where we do requests for promo, for, for proposal. It is a long drawn-out process. And last but not least, you change in the middle of a year, you, you really just bungle up all your, your reporting and so forth. It has been the recommendation of everybody that we've talked to, that we, we do all this prelude, the pension board, the, 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 uh, request for proposals and so forth, such that it, it occurs where we can pick a different company, or should we decide to pick a different company, at the end of the physical year, when, when it fits the accounting process best. That all the year processing has been done, the, uh, numbers have been presented, presented to the au- the auditors and so forth. So, that's, that's where we are with the AccureSure Mock and Hop contract. The bottom line is, I don't think we have a choice. We're gonna have to use AccureSure until we get through this year. If anybody wants to comment on that, that's fine. That's just my recommendation. Um, one of the things that we're gonna have on the next a- agenda, uh, is the, uh, awarding the contract on Marion and Pacific Boulevard. Um, and I think that that's probably gonna be the extent of that. We'll, we'll talk about the rest of it. But there, there may be some money, we can do some additional roads, but the, the Marion and Pacific Boulevards are roads that were impacted by PNG. PNG has given the money to get them fixed. Uh, this comes from PNG funds. We need to, we need to authorize that during the voting session, and move forward with it.
Okay, so I have a big question.
Okay.
That's true. We should have a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in the paving account for that project.
That's something that we need to talk about. We need to- That's something that we need to talk about. We need to figure out, right now, there's nothing that comes, everything goes to the Treasury Department. The Treasury Department needs some side, set of sort of guidelines that they, when they receive a check from PNG, they need to be able to determine, is this a permit fee or is this a paving, money for paving? And, and then they, they deposit it into either the general account for permits, or they deposit it into a paving account for paving money. This is all done at the Treasury Department, and this is the reason why that hasn't happened cleanly, cause they haven't got that information yet. We need to figure out a way to make that happen, define a policy, make sure that PNG clearly identifies what this money's intended for and, and so forth. And part of this is because permits goes through Marlene, Marlene brings over the stuff, then, then, uh, then Amy gets some, some money in from, from, in the mail, and she just doesn't know where it goes, so she puts it in the general account. We can, if, if we understand what it is, we can move it to the, to the paving account, I don't have an issue with that. It's just, this should really be done by the Treasury Department when they receive the money. See what I'm saying?
I do, but I'm gonna have the, a motion for next meeting to move the hundred fifty-four thousand out of the general fund to the paving account.
Perfect. That's exactly what we did on the first forty-five thousand dollars.
Exactly.
That's perfect. I got no issue with that at all.
So, it wouldn't be a total of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, it would be a hundred and?
Nine thousand.
Hundred and ninety.
A hundred and nine. The, the forty-five thousand was mighty, we already have that.
The forty-five, that was for Marion.
It was for Marion. We already have that money over there.
Yes.
There was a.
There was a spreadsheet that, that, uh, Linda prepared. I don't know that I printed it out and brought it here with me.
There was a second agreement for Pacific.
Yes.
There was. These were just combined to go out the bid together.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think I brought that down here. There, there's another spreadsheet that she prepared that had all of them there, and she was asking which of these are, are permits and which of them are, are paving.
Okay.
It, it's not entirely obvious. So, anyway, yeah, I, I agree. We need to make a motion to move the hundred nine thousand dollars over there and, and, and get that done at the next meeting. That would, very wise to do.
Yeah, and I would think, uh, I'm not blaming it on anybody, but I mean, as simple as somebody gets up and asks a question, hey, we got this from PNG, where does it go? That's all it takes.
You get hundreds of checks from hundreds of different places, why is PNG any different than the hundreds of others that you get?
We're not getting hundreds of checks.
We get hundreds of checks and the, and by the Treasury Department.
Well, somebody's hiding them, I don't see. If you're talking personal checks, that's totally different.
No. Okay, well, anyway, we, we can do that, and I agree with that wholeheartedly. Um. The next is a, a discussion of a resolution to repair, repeal Resolution Ten of two thousand and one relative to the amendment of the city's pension plan. Um, it needs to be discussed this time, and we need to vote on it at the next meeting. Maybe you should really explain what we're doing here.
Yeah, this is, um, this was from, I think, the twenty twenty-one audit, or the audit of twenty twenty-one. There was a resolution that somehow the auditors found from two thousand and one, um, where the city passed to try to amend the pension ordinance. Can't amend the ordinance through a resolution, um, despite the city saying, hey, we're not enforcing this because it's a resolution, we understand that, they would like it off the city's books.
Makes sense to me. Simplify and add likeness. I like it. Uh. Wow, we got through it all. It's time for Tony. Give us your, your stuff, Tony.
Uh, oh. Motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund in the amount of sixty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-three cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Cosner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Parks Fund account in amount of four thousand, twenty-seven dollars and forty-six cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Cosner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Line Usage Fund in amount of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighteen cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Cosner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Grant Fund in amount of ten thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Cosner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Rec Fund in amount of five hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-eight cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Cosner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yep.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoice from Liquid Fuels Fund in amount of eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Cosner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve the transfer of seventy-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars from the general fund to the payroll account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Cosner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion, motion to transfer one thousand, four hundred and seven dollars from the general fund to the healthcare account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Cosner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve sewer rehabilitation project phase three, the payment resolution and certificate number thirty-two in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, thirty-seven dollars and thirty cents for the phase three work performed from April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five by WEC Engineering.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Cosner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve sewer rehabilitation project phase three payment resolution and certificate in the amount of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, ninety-eight dollars and eighty cents for phase three work performed from May first, two thousand twenty-five through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five by Inside Pipe Contracting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Cosner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay CFS Bank in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from the general fund as payment towards the remaining balance of the TAN net.
Hmm. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
By the way, after this, there'll be a hundred eighty-four thousand dollar balance.
Perfect, thank you. Call the roll.
Counselperson Cosner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselor Wachowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
And, uh, like to just quickly, don't, for discussion on, I think we should consider using, and, um, some of, some do use it, some don't. So, we, I think we should all be on the same page, out of office and Outlook, so the staff knows when people are off or when they're gonna be off ahead of time.
I don't have an issue with that as long as it's a planned out, out of office. If you get struck by a car and you're in a hospital, or obviously, you're not gonna be able to do that, but I agree, one hundred percent.
We should probably get for council too, like if we're out on vacation or something of that nature, we should probably.
Yeah, we can.
And one, one thing that I do, and this is just me, and I'm just different than everybody else, my phone is forwarded to my cellphone. So, you call the, the city hall and ask for the mayor, it doesn't matter if it's ten o'clock at night, eight o'clock in the morning, I'm in, in Europe, whatever, it rings on my phone, so I get that phone call regardless. And I get my Outlook email on my phone and on my iPad regardless of where I am, because internet just happens to work worldwide. So, I see absolutely no reason why I would ever put it out of office on there, because I'm always on, available and always on, on, considered to be available.
If you're gonna be out, maybe for you, yes, but if somebody else is gonna be, or anybody else is gonna be out, or out and about, or half a day and things like that, and you're trying, you don't know that, you're saying, you're trying to send somebody a question, it doesn't happen until the person comes back and doesn't know what's going, you don't know what's going on.
Well, and, and that's possible. We need to find the, the criteria of it, if you have it on your cellphone or, or whatever, that's one thing. If it's not, then that's something else.
Well, I'm not ex, I'm not expecting it to be on people's cellphones. I am asking that it is in your Outlook on your computer. That's what I'm asking.
As an example, you don't use a computer, use your cellphone. You always, you're always available.
Yes.
Yeah, unless you're in a meeting.
I see it.
We get you.
I see it.
Right, that's.
But if someone's out of office here, like, I'll give you the perfect example. Linda, this afternoon, late, around four-thirty, quarter to five, sent out the last, she sent me the thing about what would be my totals and everything else.
Mm-hmm.
And I responded back to her, I had a question. She's out of office till Monday now.
That's right.
I wouldn't have known that had she done, done that.
Well, that's perfect.
That's the reason for out of office.
Right.
So, I'm just saying, there's no reason, I'm, I'm.
Okay.
Saying that I'd like.
That's a common courtesy that I think everybody should, should abide by. If you're not available for, for responding, you need to put a note on your, your o- office, you're out of office.
Yeah, and you're, you're gonna be out, put it on. If you're gonna, you're on vacation, we're not gonna bug you, put it on.
That's fine.
You can do that individually, you don't need a service. It's on your account, and you can share your account with other people if you want, but it's as simple as file options, and it says there, out of office, you click on it and you just define the dates and the times, and you can put a description of I will not be available and I'm not reachable in such and such a time. You click that and it automatically does the rest.
Okay, I. I'll show you how that works.
Thanks.
Not a problem, that's easy.
At least, my, uh. Billions of people use it every day.
Okay. Cool. Lois Thomas is not here today, and, uh, I don't know, I'm just praying for is all I can say. John, do you have anything you'd like to talk about?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Um, I was gonna give my full packet, but I just think the lack of time.
Wait till next, next.
Yeah, I'm gonna put it in my van and push it back another, another meeting, but, yeah, cause there's really, there's no one here, really, that's in, uh, they don't matter, but, um. So, on that, and then I just wanted to talk about, um, um, I've been getting, I'm sure Counselperson Cosner's been getting slammed too, with the parking issues again down on Skoomaker, uh, Flecia's.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, that's been long gone.
Yeah, I, I, anytime, I, sometimes when I go there, I like put a disguise on or something, but, but, um, I was just looking around, I was thinking, we own the lot that's next to Douglas's apartment and the, and it's next to the parking garage. Is there any way to put rocks or something of that nature where it's drivable, parkable, and then have a street opening? Since the one that's open for the park, or for the parking garage is closed now, so cars can park in front of it, have a new opening and have people park in that, in that area down on that hill.
And we probably ought to.
And that would stop, I mean, we cut the grass, everything, we own the property. I mean, that would give someone space to then have nice, clean access across the street.
You can ask, uh, Rodney or, or somebody in the Streets Department to give us a number, what it'd take to, to, to do that. I don't have a problem with that.
I mean, chief, would you have an issue with that?
I would have an issue with that, but that's, I think you might have other things where engineers and people up in order need to make that decision.
Yeah, okay. But I mean, I just was looking at that lot, like, we own it, we're cutting it, we're not utilizing it. I mean, I understand there's a mailbox there, but there wouldn't, I don't think that'd be an issue getting around that. I don't know, but I'm just trying to think of something else.
How many spots would that open up?
Oh, you could probably park probably twenty cars in there?
Well, that'd be significant.
Pro, I, would you say twenty? You know a lot that I mentioned, right?
I know exactly. And I know she'd be thrilled because it cuts down on her business, because they can't, they don't have a place to park.
Yeah.
And a lot of her customers are older, they can't walk as far, they can't walk, park as a.
And I noticed that, that, yeah, and it, it's right across the street from her door too, it'd be perfect, you know?
Yeah, it'd be perfect. She'd, she'd be thrilled.
So, the question is, do we need to get engineering involved to, to?
I would highly suggest so. I would like to see that happen, because like, since you have that empty lot there.
Engineer and, and then get it implemented by the Streets Department.
Yeah, I mean, just, I mean, I don't see why that would be an issue, like coming out of there, cause we already had a parking garage there at one time, you know, I don't see that.
Well, I can, I can reach out to, uh, to Vitell and, and ask him to give us a, a plan to do this, and then get Rodney to implement it.
Yeah. Because, I mean, like I said, what's the use of cutting the grass if we're not, if we can't do something with that lot?
Okay.
I mean, I hate to see parking lots downtown, don't get me wrong, I hate to see that, but this one, I think is called for it.
Actually, I, I like to see parking lots as long as there's business.
Business, exactly, exactly.
That drives it.
But, um, then that's all I have, Mayor, I yield the floor, thank you.
Thank you. Karen, your turn.
Well, update on the Billy Price concert. We met one day, was it this week?
Mm-hmm.
I think so. And at the park, I think things are moving ahead, we've gotten some volunteers, and when all of our donations that we, we, grants and, we'll have over twenty-five thousand dollars set aside for the, the whole series of concerts, and that money's being placed in the park budget, but, um, Linda's earmarking it for these, for the grants and everything, so I think, I think we're gonna have a large turnout, I, I would hope that everybody shows up, if you know people who wanna help, direct traffic and things like that, would be thrilled to have them.
I think that, uh, one of the things that we need to do over the course of the next two weeks is, is enter in a bunch of requisitions.
Yeah.
For all the different things that need to be paid, and therefore, at the next meeting we have, the, the checks will be available for printing and be available for us to, uh, to distribute it upon the completion of the con, the concert.
Right, the band and the sound, right, yeah, definitely.
The bands, the sound, and advertisements, signs, whatever we're doing.
Doing, sorry to, uh, interrupt, I apologize. Do we have any more yard signs?
For?
For the Billy Price thing? I was gonna put one in my yard, you know, any of that.
There's one, yeah, over there.
Oh.
Oh, right underneath. Okay, you don't mind if I throw that in my yard, do you?
No.
Okay.
You got a good, you good, good place.
Yeah, right, right downtown, so, yeah.
I like it.
Good idea, thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll bring in you one for next time. After this concert, we got one for each of them.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind if the city put one in, you know, my property, it's heavy, driven by.
This, this really stands a, an excellent opportunity of being quite a, a event for the city of Maneston. Um, it's gonna require a lot of work. We don't have as many volunteers as we'd like to have, but the volunteers we have are dedicated and, and, uh, willing to, to go the extra mile. Um, I really have great hopes that this is gonna be a big di, bill, big deal, and, uh, I, I really expect that the second one, people are gonna go, wow, that was, first one was good, let's see, I wanna see the second one, and there'll be more people the second one. So, it's just, uh, it's a challenge. Go ahead, I'm sorry, didn't mean to take that away from you.
I don't know, nothing. I think we're moving ahead, and the Knights of Columbus was kind enough to let us use their lots of parking if people need that. We wrote a letter and they said that's fine, so we're excited. I think it's gonna be great.
Thank you very much.
Let's just hope that it's a beautiful day like today.
Yeah, we, we, we'll, we have no rain date. If it gets rained out, the con, the concert's canceled, there will be no rain date.
Rain date, okay.
It's true. I mean, how do you even do that?
Yeah, yeah, it's just not something we can do. So, this will either be a big success or, or, or not, nothing at all. But unless it's a downpour, you can expect we're gonna be out there.
Okay, we've gotten five different bids for the HVAC, either, only one had within their bid to repair the units, and the others were strictly replacing, and the last time they were all replaced was in two thousand two. And I think Dave said, and I've read someplace, it was through a grant, so when we look at grants, do we?
We don't look at anything that we want to.
Do we know anybody who would know what kind of grant would grant for e- equipment like that, in, instead of programming?
We've, we've started it with Dave now.
With?
With a grant, you know, opportunity, so have more information at the next meeting.
The problem is, is that we're running into, by the next meeting, it can be so miserable in the library that it becomes a nonusable thing.
True too, yeah.
The, uh, the concept that I had, and it's just a concept, for whatever it's worth, was let's make work what we can make work at the least possible cost. And that was, there's one of them that has a bad compressor, replace the compressor, that's a known price and we can get that done. The other one has a leak in the system. A leak in the system is one of those things that maybe it's something that's easily found, maybe it's not, but leaks can be fixed. So, uh, one of them was, was to fix a leak in it. That would get two of the air conditioners working again to some degree, and I think that there's one working now, is that correct?
Oh, I was there the other day and it was a warm day, and I was surprised, it was cool. How that's possible, I don't know.
I think there's one, I think there's, I think there's one working.
One must be working.
There's one that's working right now. That would get three of them working and we would be able to, to, to exist. I'm not advocating until we find funding, replacing all of them myself.
We can't.
We can't. But I do think we ought to be looking for ways to do in that. We've got, the, 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 the sad part about it is, is that we got lots of HVAC companies around the area. You call them up and say, we need these air conditioners to work. They look at these air conditioners and they say, oh, that's just old, it's decrepit, it needs to be replaced, and it's gonna be fourteen thousand dollars, whatever their price is for replacing air conditioners. Only Godlet knows that system well enough to say, I know that I can replace that compressor, I know that this one has a leak in the system and I can fix that leak. Only he is, is, is willing to do it at that level. Everybody else that we've asked to come over there is looking at it saying, oh, my goodness, these, they gotta be replaced. Now, council can do what they want, but that's where it's at right now. Now, council can do what they want, but that's where it's at right now. Go ahead.
Okay. Then, bids for the tree removal, if you remember, we received a grant for that tree removal, and then to plant some additional trees. And we have had two companies come out and look at the trees, thirty-three trees were tagged that they are coming down. I think one maybe is going to be pruned, but it was Dylan Tree Removal, and he said he could tell by looking at them, then a few years, they're going to need to be taken down, so why even prune them? And he had given us a bid for seventy-five hundred dollars, but we're thinking that he needs to come out and give us another bid. That was too low compared to the other company, MCS, who gave us a bid for seventeen thousand. We thought, this is too much of a disparity, somebody wasn't looking at the full job, but...
Yeah, sit down with them, make sure he understands what, understands what it's got.
Yeah, they understand what they are.
He's coming out Saturday to do that, so, and we'll have a comparable bid.
Okay.
I thought it was fair to do that, so...
Yeah, and some of those trees are in very precarious situations.
How much money did we receive as grants to get this project done?
Seventy-two thousand.
But over...
But over two to, yeah, two to three-year period. But this will be half of it if we come up with these bids and move forward for implementation. So DCNR is going to allocate around thirty-six thousand.
Well, that sounds like a perfect deal, let's evaluate his bid.
Just make sure, and he's very good, and I thought it was fair to Karen, I think we talked before...
The same thing happens when we pave roads. We go out for bids, we spec it out, it's going to take this much material, this much distance we're doing, we give it to everybody, and somebody underbids it by twenty, half the price is somebody else. And you have to look at it, are they really capable of doing that job at that price?
Well, you've got to look at it again, because this doesn't even make sense.
Okay, well, let's look at it again.
And then they said it was a two-day job, I like to see that.
I think it's more, more than...
Those trees are massive, and I don't want them to end up on the amphitheater.
No.
Nor do I want them ending up in the rivers and going down that farm grade.
No, no, that's true.
Mayor, one direction, what do you...
No, you go ahead, yeah, I was going to bring up the air conditioner.
Okay. You mentioned about getting for the library and getting it just fixed, basically, okay?
Mm-hmm.
When I rejected that quote, I told everybody why I rejected it, and it's been crickets since then.
We've, I've got new quotes, and I put them on everybody's desk, on the table here.
There's a quote from Godlet for doing the basic repair in the one?
Right, and that needs to be updated. I sat down with Godlet, and I said, that part's still good, and he said, no.
I, that's why I did not say yes, because I said prices have gone up, tariffs and everything else, and I haven't seen anything.
That's because we haven't seen it either, as soon as we get it, we will go...
I'm just, I'm just making this very clear.
There's not been another requisition put in the system until we get all the numbers together, and when we get all the numbers together, we'll put them together, and we'll provide it to you.
But I, it's not hanging on us.
I didn't say it was, I didn't say it was.
I just want to be clear, that's what happened.
No, I'm just saying that we're trying to get these numbers updated, and I do think it'll happen very quickly. Anything else? I'd like to make a motion for a German.
Salute.
Eight oh four PM. Thank you.